Court order on August the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four at uh ten oh five A M. And just for correction, there's typo, it should be special meeting, it says regular meeting. So clerk will change that for us. Okay, alright. Show that a quorum is present and uh all members of the court are present in the courtroom. And uh since we left that on there, do you leave us an implication?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and a pledge of allegiance, if y'all staying with me?
Dear everybody, Lord, thank you for today, Lord, just thank you for watching over us. Lord, just guide us today as we uh conduct county business. Lord, just help us through this budget process, Lord, that we uh just do everything we can, Lord, to spend this money wisely. Lord, I ask you to protect those who are fighting for our freedom, Lord, who are away from their families, just bring them back home safely. Lord, just be with our law enforcement loathly and statewide, Lord, just as they protect us through the day. Lord, thank you for all you've done, thank you for walking over us in Jesus' precious name and prayer.
Amen. Good going, please. U S, please.
Pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh do we have any, somebody sign up for public comment? Okay. Item number four, consent agenda, the consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory. Will be enacted with one motion, there will not be a separate discussion of these items. However, any consent agenda item may be removed for individual consideration between to request by a commissioner's court member. Uh first item uh under consent is budget amendments, we have one, uh budget amendment number sixty-eight. And then we have bills to approve, uh do we have any utilities crossing county roads?
No, sir.
Nobody?
No, sir.
No. Alright, and then?
Could I ask a question about budget amendments?
Okay.
Is that, is that the one for uh your council?
Yes, for the markers.
For the markers? Yes, sir, he mentioned to me.
Yeah, I, uh, he mentioned to me that they had done two markers.
They did two, yes, sir. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Alright, and then we have minutes for the special meeting on uh July the first, twenty twenty-four, July the eighth, twenty twenty-four. Uh and then that's a regular meeting, and then regular meeting of July the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mims, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. Uh item number five, is considered to take action to approve an interlocal agreement between Anderson County and Anderson County Adult Probation for I T computer services. And uh Mike and Director for Probation, Angela Shealy is present, so they've been uh working for last several months. And I'll let them explain it. Go ahead.
Morning, gentlemen. Um what you have before you is just a service agreement between us, the Adult Probation Office. Um we had uh been working pretty much, it seems like over a year since we started this project, trying to get everything going. Um uh we've been doing services since Milo left, we've kind of filled the gap uh for I T services for their department. And we did check in with other counties, and it seems to be um tech services, AKA computer support and that kind of stuff falls on to the local county anyway. So it just seemed more likely to go ahead and just adopt where we get at least paid back from that department since they are an outside, uh they're not directly underneath the county. It would be just something that was just added in. Um and they're, everything was agreed upon between us and them. Um and for the, for the prices that we were gonna get, um they still will be providing all the hardware. Uh we'll just, all we'll do is um just go ahead and kind of just adopt, uh well, we've actually already done it, we've just been doing it for years and just never got paid for it. So just wanted to go ahead and just start getting paid for it. Um we've been providing the email support and the office support for them for close on. I wanna say it's been um um probably eight, ten years since we've been providing email anyway. Um so it's one of the, the biggest part of their software anyway is already part provided by us, so.
And they have to interact with the courts?
Correct, this will also.
Different clerks and all that too.
This will also make it to where we'll go ahead and just um put in a device at their office. Right now, currently, all their computers remote in through a V P N tunnel. It's taxing to their computers, makes it slower, we'll put a device over there, just go ahead and have them be kind of like a satellite office like we did with veterans. Um and uh also with the shop and uh some of the other places.
What kind of workload is gonna add to you?
It's very minimal. Um I mean, we actually estimated and did a calculation, and I think we only ended up doing uh, I wanna say it was about uh forty-eight tickets for them over the last year, uh so it's very minimal.
Angela, you want?
I would just, just like to say that the I T department has been very helpful to us, even though we weren't considered underneath their umbrella. Um they've been very gracious to help us when we needed it, we just are at a point now where we're gonna need it a little bit more with new computer setup. And we'd just like to um continue to use their services and for them to get paid for the resources and the time that they're spending in our office.
Allison is the one either drafted or looked over this interlocal agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay, so she's approved it?
Yes. She modified all of the information that was um lacking um in it, because I sent her over the, the original draft.
But the state's buying all the hardware?
Yes, sir.
The county's not buying any hardware?
Correct, yes, sir.
You're just getting the support from I T?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred, that's what's on the, twenty-five hundred per year on the agreement.
Anybody any questions?
Uh no, sir, I don't.
Uh I'll entertain a motion to approve an interlocal agreement between Anderson County and Anderson County uh Adult Probation to uh for I T services. Do I have my?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered, okay. Thank you, Angela. Item number six, is considered to take action on purchases of a bat wing mower for precinct two, Roden Bridge Department, Commissioner Mims.
Oh, yes, sir, uh actually, I was uh looking around for bat wings, maybe a new one, and then some of the crosses, uh twenty-two. And I kind of compared uh other prices, I went and looked at a few other ones, but we found a two thousand twenty-two uh up here at noonday. And he had it listed for nineteen-five, we were able to get it for eighteen-five, if the court so pleases this morning. Uh very minimal hurt on it, I have uh pictures of it here if you guys wanna see it, it's a fifteen-foot. And um it's in great shape, it's an old guy who bought it. There it is, and he uh wanted a form, got rid of his stuff and sold out and a new one would cost about twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars, so I just went on, wanted to put in a bid at eighteen-five, and they said they'll accept it, the court taken it.
Well, um what was the total, Lord, again, Commissioner?
Eighteen-five, and we're using some twenty-three-year-old bat wings. And I do have two comparable quotes, I found a two thousand nineteen, it had more mileage on it, it was kind of wore out. Uh it's um seventy-five, and then I found a two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three five.
This was like a two thousand two?
This is two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay.
Yes, sir, for eighteen-five.
Alright, any questions? Not all entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a bat wing mower, uh it's amount of eighteen thousand five hundred for precinct two, Roden Bridge Department.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chapin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. Alright, item number seven, is considered to take action on declaring a Lee Boy lay-down machine and a trailer surplus to sell at auction, uh Commissioner Dixon?
Uh yes, sir, we have a Lee Boy paver, and uh we're gonna put it up for auction. Uh I speak with Mr. Will Banks coming in, and I don't, I think the paver's run its life, nobody else is gonna use it. Uh so we're gonna go ahead and sell it, try to purchase another piece, quit with it, but the last, the VIN number on it's one-one-eight-eight-one-five, asset number six-one-three-dash-one-thirty. And then we have a tilt trailer that pretty much is just to haul the lay-down machine around on, it's not heavy enough to haul it back or anything. Uh the last five of that VIN number is zero-zero-two-zero-zero, and I'd like to declare both them surplus, we put them in the next auction.
Okay, since you read the Vins, you wanna put that in form of a motion?
I put that in form of motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Dixon uh to uh show the Lee Boy lay-down machine in a trailer, that he stated the Vins on both of those as surplus to sell at auction, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, do I have a second? Uh excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. Item number eight, considering take action to lower the speed limit on Anderson County Road thirty-five eighty-two from sixty to thirty-five miles per hour. And we had the public hearing, it's all, already been conducted on August the twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at our regular commissioner's court meeting, Commissioner Dixon?
Uh yes, sir, at this time, I'd just like to go through with the official motion of uh lowering the speed limit from sixty miles an hour to thirty miles an hour.
It's supposed to be thirty-five.
Supposed to be thirty-five.
So we, we need to correct that?
Yes.
Okay, from sixty to thirty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's on County Road thirty-five eighty-two?
Yes, sir.
And that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so ordered. Okay, item number nine is uh budget workshop. And I think Megan prepared uh a document that we reviewed that uh shows uh the changes and all after the proposed budget was filed, what we've done in the workshops the last couple of times, so. Megan, you wanna go over that document, did everybody get a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. I think most of it is gonna be the healthcare and the, some of the salary changes on some of those line items.
This is all the changes that the court has approved um for the last two budget workshops that we've done. Um mainly, it's just the healthcare and then the few, the clerks that y'all raised. And then on page five, those are the operating changes, and at the bottom, it shows the updated deficit. And then page six is the special revenue fund.
That's sent bill twenty-two.
That, and the um county clerk records and the security service fee for the health insurance.
Hey Mark, can you hit that last? Just kind of reviewing, comparing. Uh I kind, I took her document, made sure the public can see some of it too, so.
This is also in your handout as well?
Yes. So this was the original proposed, it's a twenty-seven million, you could see that on the, that budget uh expenditures. And then the proposed, I think we're gonna need to hit one more last, little glare on that. Yeah, that's better, okay. Alright, so we had uh seven point seven million essentially as our estimated fund balance after the proposed budget. But you know, and of course, we had those graphs, and y'all remember seeing that, that, that was the figure that was on that graph, is the proposed ending fund balance. And if you look over at the first column, right after the, it lists all the functions, then it's uh the estimated ending fund balance this year was nine million three hundred and fifty-five thousand, uh nine seventy-six. So. Yeah, I, I blew that up so you could see it, so it kind of condensed it down just for those columns, so essentially, the proposed budget was twenty-seven million, eight fifty-four, four fifty-seven, excuse me, four fifty-six. And then with the ending, estimated ending fund balance, uh seven point seven million. So essentially, this is at least three months operating, and actually, it's, it's over three months operating, which puts us in a good financial position. That's always been kind of the, the standard, is three months operating, when I was in school business for fourteen, school board for fourteen years, that was always the uh kind of the standard, is three months operating, in case you have emergencies or something happens during the year.
Megan, what's this new sheet?
That's updated with all the changes, this is, he's saying this is why it's proposed.
I have that, that was coming.
I got you, that's what we started with.
I just thought we'd start with where we were and kind of see where we're at now, okay? Alright, so this is, this is with the changes. Uh all that's been added is, and I blew that up for you, so essentially, with all of the changes, where we're at right now in the, this, Megan's prepared us is leaving us with six million four hundred and thirty-three thousand nine twenty-one, and our budget is at twenty-nine million one twenty-four one sixty-seven. And so that's a decrease in the fund balance by a million two sixty-nine seven eleven. So that leaves us less than three months operating by eight hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars, so over eight hundred thousand, less than three months operating. So, and I, I didn't know what we were gonna look at, so I put these in here just so everybody could see. These are essentially, you can see it's healthcare and some of the withholdings and things like that, so uh we, I'm just gonna go through these till we get down to some of the other line items. So th- these are all the different offices with, with the changes in some of the FICA and the health insurance.
With all those changes, do you know what the percentage is? You say it's less than three months, but is it what?
Twenty-one point nine.
Yeah, it's still twenty-two percent, it's still, it's still well.
Twenty-two percent, okay.
Our policy is eighteen to twenty-five.
Okay, so we're in best standings, yes.
Just what we've said it.
Yes, sir.
And then it's a recommendation from the state.
Eighteen.
Okay, so, so this is the, this is a, a major change, and that was after we took and used the ARPA for the contracts for medical and meals. And the court added that million seven thirty-two nine seventy-nine into contingency, okay? So that increased, ba- basically increased our budget by that, that one point seven million, okay? Now, the uh, so we started out with a deficit budget of one million six fifty-two three forty-four. With this, it gives us a two point nine million dollar deficit. Now, if somebody's looking at our budget, I want everybody to understand, that's wha, that's gonna be what they're gonna see, okay? I understand putting that in contingency is, is a little different than, than just budgeting it, okay? But I won't, if somebody's looking at our budget and it shows a two point nine million dollar deficit, that doesn't look very good, if y'all agree with me on that. Okay, now, with, without that in there, we actually reduced, without that showing in there, we reduced the deficit by another four hundred and sixty-three thousand two sixty-eight with what we did by covering the medical and the grocery contracts. So that puts us a lot better, lot better deficit, one point one eighty-nine. And that's kind of where we were trying to go, was reduce that deficit from the very beginning. So I wanted to kind of show you without that in there, okay? Now, something I'm gonna point out, and I thought about this the other day, but I didn't wanna bring it up till I had a chance to look at it. So what we need to look at is, is in an itemized budget in local government code in, in one-eleven, then essentially it talks about an itemized budget, and this is statutory. So the county judge shall itemize a budget to allow us clear comparison as uh practicable between expenditures included in the proposed budget and actual expenditures for the same or similar purposes that were made for the preceding fiscal year, actually, we looked at three years. The budget must show as definitely as possible each of the projects for which an appropriation is established in the budget and the estimated amount of money carried in the budget for each project, okay? So, and this is the part that talks about contingency. Notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, the county may establish in the budget a reserve contingency item. But the item must be included in the itemized budget under section one-eleven point zero-zero-four A in the same manner as a project for which an appropriation is established in the budget. So you have to itemize, even if we put that one million seven in the contingency, even though it is contingency, you still have to itemize what you're using that one point seven million for. So in the past, now, the experience that we had is when we were doing uh construction projects, like on the jail, on the uh records room for the sheriff's office. The Jew and out detention center expansion, the annex, all those things were itemized in permanent improvement, that's where we itemized them, because they were construction projects. And I know Commissioner Chapin, the court's talked about uh an expo center, we've talked about, and, and he's been working on, I guess, preliminary numbers and some, some drawings uh for that, as well as uh trying to do something to add on to the AgriLife building over here. So if that's kind of where we're, this one point seven, if that's what you're thinking, we may need to, uh if you've got some figures, we probably need, and this is the planning, the long-term planning for the, for the court is the budget process, so if we need to, it would be better to transfer uh to other funds, move that to permanent improvement and designate it for what projects you're, you're intending on using it for. If that makes sense.
It was like what we did a few years ago, moving a million dollars to transfer other funds, which was for the ag extension project, which, you know, we didn't go that way, but.
So. There's a statutory requirement that we identify, it's when somebody picks up the budget, you got one point seven million dollars, it doesn't look like we got a slush fund.
Yeah.
It's showing that this, these are the intended purposes, whether you use it for it or not.
Right.
Okay? And then you can put explanations, uh you know, Megan puts notes in the budget anyway of what the purposes for things are, so.
Commissioner, do you have any idea yet as far as AgriLife building, what them improvements were looking at for money-wise?
Yes, I'm, I've met with three different contractors and it's been averaging between thirty-two and thirty-five dollars a square foot finished. So if we build a forty by seventy, which would, you know, accommodate the needs of what they've got, given it ground level, it come to anywhere between eighty to ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars, which is, you know, quite a bit cheaper than fixing the elevator, so. It would eliminate that, that need for that, or the stair accesses. So it'd be a ground level to that parking lot on the upper end of it. But I just met with one Friday and uh we looked at the project in the city. I've met with them and I've got all the uh plaits and everything for them, you know, and they have declared that it's not in their historical commission uh area. So it could be built, uh they wanted twenty percent lighting, you know, in it as far as just, you know, I guess the appearance of the building. But it could just be a, you know, regular metallic tin building, didn't have to have brick, rock, or anything on it, nothing particular. So we got that far with them and they're waiting on the drawings. And I'm gonna have to do a rough scale drawing for them to approve it and then send it to an official, you know, uh either, either an architect or somebody that can draw the building out for them.
Well, could we just take, say, a hundred and fifty out of that for that project and rest for the expo center?
Expo, yes.
So you're saying, is it thirty-five hundred square feet in it, what you kind of?
Whatever the, yes, to the forty by seventy.
Okay, times.
At thirty-five, that's ninety-eight thousand.
Ninety-eight thousand.
Thirty-five dollars a square foot?
Mm-hmm, that'd be the maximum.
Ninety-eight thousand.
I had quotes as low down as twenty-eight. It just depends on how elaborate we get on the inside, which we, I think we can minimize that.
Yes.
So a hundred and fifty?
That wouldn't be my fault, that'd give you a leeway if it come in at a hundred thousand after it's said and done, cause price is gonna change and this, you know, don't know when it's gonna happen.
Well, there is also, this year, I had the roof looked at, you know, so one um, you know, guy gave me an estimated price around fifty thousand dollars to to just put a brand-new metal roof on the building.
Well, what would you estimate, Commissioner, as far as what needs to be satisfied for that building with that?
One seventy-five would probably do it all, you know, and that'd give even the awning over that door on the end where Jenna sits. And that would eliminate the, the water on top of the building, which is, you know, it's, it's been there for years. But it's a flat roof and eventually it's gonna have to be re-tarred or re-gravelled, so that would eliminate all that process.
So you're talking about putting a metal roof over the?
Just put in with a one and a half uh, you know, foot, um about a one and a half on it as far as pitch wise goes. Building across the street's one and twelve, so, you know, with that being said, it's uh seventy-five foot wide. So one and a half would be, you know, a, a decent pitch, it's still going to the awning that where the original um, um drop-off, you know, for the um drive-through was. It gets them under that, is what I'm saying. There's a little bit of concrete work needs to probably done, that concrete needs to be cut out, that one section, just to make sure to repair that, that ground level, you know, where they've been having the drip come in. It's coming in right off that concrete level. It's not coming from the seat roof.
Well, on the safe side, I would recommend two hundred then.
That's what I was thinking?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And I think.
I'd rather have a little breathing there.
And if you did get a metal roof on it, built a new building, it could all be kinda blended together then, that it's
Mm-hmm.
Two similar buildings, so I think it would solve some of the problems we have there, so. My opinion would be set two hundred thousand aside for that and other put into the expo or whatever, fairground, whatever it's been called.
Maybe that's the four H.
It's uh AgriLife.
AgriLife. Yes, AgriLife.
But there's a lot of other things you can go on that building, the city was kinda excited about whether they could use it for some of their trainings, you know, which would be available. I, I would just like to, you know, show that AgriLife, you know, the extension office would have the president's uh schedule. But, you know, with their meetings, they're just sporadic, the way they do it, they're using the annex now, so for the most part, and then um.
Is that gonna be just a large meeting room?
Mm, a large meeting room with two bathrooms, both being wheelchair, you know, uh handicap accessible, and then one room that would be a, basically a catering room, and then set up a, a small type kitchen, not so much a kitchen, that's what I talked to the city about. It won't, won't be a commercial kitchen, or just somewhere they can put a hot plate and a refrigerator.
For her to do projects.
For her to do her projects on, and she said she didn't need a big laid-out kitchen, but just have somewhere where a lot of times they get rumps and different ones to cater for Truman, and the same with any other that might set up for a uh training. You know, they could have a, a catering room, basically where it'd be.
Well, they do that, training for like di- people with diabetes and other health issues on, making sure they're getting the right diets and things like that. They do classes like that, so.
How many would it hold?
It approximately said about, I, I figured if it was right, about a hundred and sixty. Mm-hmm.
Alright, look, what we're talking about the contingency, y'all have a problem with putting another, since that, those funds are there, putting a two hundred thousand, leaving that two hundred with three hundred thousand in case the, the sheriff's office has major repairs that we talked about the other day?
There's three hundred in there now.
Well, we, we started out with three hundred, then that million seven got added. Y'all have a problem with leaving two hundred thousand, that doesn't even have to split.
That's right.
But if there's repairs, we can still, some of the big stuff like air conditioners, some of that can either come out of capital outlay or it can come out of permanent improvement like we discussed up there. But just to have some available uh in contingency, would y'all be alright with leaving two hundred there? An extra two hundred, like maybe last?
But she would make it.
So leaving two hundred more than the three hundred, so leaving five hundred in there, is what you're saying?
He's talking about leaving five hundred in, but taking it away from the one seven.
Right, I was just clarifying what he's saying.
And then that would be uh, that would leave, if you take the two, that'd be five, that'd leave about, you know, one point three. I mean, that'd be somewhere we could start, but that's a, I mean.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
If we have to transfer it, we had to.
And it has to be moved out by the court, so.
That's true.
And we can move it to that other project if we need it.
Y'all okay on that?
Yep.
I am.
Alright, so.
Yes.
You got that down to change?
Two hun- uh five hundred total left in contingency. Two hundred um is gonna be to transfer other funds for the AgriLife extension project, and the rest would be, what are you calling it?
Expo center.
Expo center?
That's what you got in her book under.
Well, that's what, well, that's what it was when it was the ag extension project going to the civic center, that's what y'all called it then.
The civic center was called that.
Whenever you first bought the civic center, that's what it was called.
I mean, you need to change everything.
No, it can civic.
It's gonna be, how are you gonna, how are you talking about designating it now?
Civic, um Expo Center?
Okay. That's what the commissioners wanted, designating it. I'm gonna bring y'all up to speed on something, just, I wanna, I, I hadn't, I was kinda waiting to see what y'all wanted to do with the civic center. So I needed to, we had storm damage out there. It tore off some of the back wall. And before I filed an insurance claim, I didn't know where y'all wanted to go with this on the structure. Whether you wanna doze it, sell the property, leave it like it is, sell the property, do something with it. I'm just asking, I'm just making you aware that this thing's damaged, and before I spend any money on repairs, I wanna find out where you wanna go with it.
I think we should put the property up for sale.
Yes, I'd like to list it, but I don't, I just like sell it as is, I think anybody that's gonna buy.
I guess.
With the potentials is gonna tear the building down anyway.
So I think you should list it, put it up for sale and.
Alright, there has to be an open listing under local government code, so. Alright, so what, I, I just wanted to ask where y'all wanted to go with that, so, okay? But I needed to bring you up to speed that we did yesterday, so, okay? Alright.
Ma'am.
Do we do, wanna do an official action item next court?
Yeah, but I think we need some time to study on what we wanna list it as, at.
Oh, and.
It was a dollar, ma'am.
And we've talked about a number of things since we're on that topic on the expo center, okay? Uh you talked about trying to form a committee at one point. And that's not a bad idea. The other thing is, if you're talking about doing that, I mean, my suggestion is that you have a bond election, so. Yeah. I, and I'd kinda like to get an idea, have y'all visited one or something that you liked the layout? I'm just trying to get some ideas, I don't have really, have y'all, have you been to one that you like the layout or the way things are functioning there that we could go look at?
Mm-hmm, I've been several, but there's one particular one that I am more favorable to, um Joey and I both visited. Uh it's not gonna be actually the actual layout of it, but just looking at some of their facilities. But the conference side of it on the front end, that's something that's gonna have to just, I think, be designed to fit our, our needs, you know, because that's one of the big things that we're trying to accomplish, be able to draw in, to have conventions and conferences come here. So one of the ones that we looked at, we liked part of it and not so much the others, so it's gonna take one or two of them to kinda blend them together to give us ideas.
I think the one we all like the best is the one in College Station, but we'd have to have a downsized.
Very miniature version of that. Well, that's, on the conference center side, on the one in College Station is perfect on the convention and conference side of it. It just needs downsized to fit our.
The rest, yeah.
But the, the backside of it, as far as the uh, the um arena type, you know, setup for the, for the uh concerts and all of the, whatever else goes on, would be Russ County.
Who, Russ County?
Yeah, Henderson.
Henderson. And we do, we've reached out to about twenty.
Do we know what their budget runs?
No, not quite, I don't know it to just, I mean, I've met with them over and we've had more open discussions about it than I have hard copies of their budgets, so. But we've reached out to about twenty-two people, I think, is what we've got committed to the um committee. And, you know, it's something I'd like to get them all together to be making decisions on.
We'd have a lot of different ideas if you get that committee together, have some ideas.
But yeah, I just want them to all run through the feasibility side of it, the, you know, the design of it, um I mean, I want it to be open to basically the majority of the public to have the, the.
Access whatever their needs is.
Yeah, to see, that's right, just to see what they're, to meet their needs, you know?
That was, I actually, 'cause I, I didn't have any information, so uh I actually got a budget so we could kinda discuss this today, so see where we need to go, but uh I, I checked with uh Houston County, and Houston County's expo is run by the city, I, I thought it was county, but it's the city. And uh, so I talked to them a little bit, and uh I think they've got maybe some people in a five oh one C three kinda help run like the rodeo and things that are down there. And I was coming back from conference and Leon County's got one, have y'all been, have y'all been down?
Yes, it's happened as well.
So I'm just trying to get an idea on a budget. And uh Henderson County has a nice facility.
Henderson County probably is one of the most
active uh facilities that, that I've seen in a county, you know, comparable to our size. Henderson and Russ County both, they are, they're scheduling, you know, they're, they're uh looking at their routines, they're booked about fifty weeks out of the year.
Hold on, man, I gotta close one out to open this other one up, this P D.
Before you get in Henderson, that road gets off to the left.
I didn't get a chance to put it in apart.
I went to go down there to a red light, and take a left, it's down there on the left, by the airport.
Okay.
Russ County Airport.
I've never took a left.
I mean, the chain link fence separates the airport properly.
I met with Henderson County twice, and then they're gonna give me their, their um twenty-twenty-one feasibility study of the impact on their economy. Um it was between twenty-two to twenty-five million dollars, and they're gonna try to give me a detailed, you know, printout, the way that they done that.
Well, I was, I was talking to the judge in uh Leon County, trying to get some information. Uh and he's indicated they built theirs in two thousand sixteen. And uh that was back before the state changed some of the rules on, and as y'all are aware, the rules changed on, on the tax rates and how they were calculated and everything. But they had uh, they built theirs in two thousand sixteen and uh have been operating it now for that period of time. And so I, I said, would y'all have a budget that I could look at? So I thought I'd share that and put it up, just to see uh, you know, what kinda funds it were being. And, you know, I don't know what's happening in Russ County, I didn't realize they had an expo center. If I can get this thing to cooperate.
Now, I don't know if Houston County, they don't have the big meeting room and stuff like that, I think theirs is just strictly a.
Leon County has.
They have a civic center, Houston County has a civic.
Yeah, Houston County has a civic center.
And that's run by the city too.
Right.
Yeah. The, I, I took their little training over there in that civic center. So on the revenue side, and you can see that, I guess, one of the biggest, biggest revenue ticket items that they got is they're using, now this is the twenty-twenty-four through the first six months, and it gets down to, let's see, down to twenty-twenty-five on this page. And they're using a, a transfer from the general fund and hot tax, is about three hundred and ten thousand. Their budget's running uh somewhere around a half million dollars to operate it.
Most of them have been that, between three to five hundred thousand dollars is what they've been, so.
Okay.
You know, and.
So that's kind of a.
Russ County says, yes, and Russ County said that, you know, theirs does really well and stays within their budget. They have a little bit more of a meeting room. Uh Leon County, they just really promote mostly, you know, more of uh the rodeo type of events. They do have the dog shows, the midget wrestlings and things like that that they have, that they can host in their arena. But they doesn't, they don't have a actual uh conference, you know, room, center type setup. Theirs is just an arena, actually have two arenas, a warm-up and the other. So everything they do has to be, you know, basically on dirt.
Well, well, I stopped in and looked at the one in, in uh Leon, so that's kinda the one that I've, I did see the one in Silver Springs. They've got one that's uh right there, it's actually funded by the school and the county, cause they're right there on the same properties. So they split a lot of the cost in uh, I think, I'm not sure if that was done with a bond election, but it's a, it's a big, a big facility. But I've looked at that one, cause I, I taught a class over there. Uh but right now, it looks like they're running a little bit of a deficit budget, a hundred and nine thousand. So that, what I was trying to do is, is see what, how, how they're funding it and how many, how many people it's taking to staff it. There was four people in Leon County that are running that facility over there. One clerk, clerical, I think they may have an, another administrator budgeted, but they didn't fill that position there. And uh, and then three people actually doing setups, takedowns, and maintenance of the building. They had a, they've got a arena two, and they're building an arena three. Arena two was one that uh some people actually donated a building they had on their property. It was a big facility, a big metal facility, and then they poured concrete and moved that over to make arena two there in Leon County. And then uh they're building like another arena. Uh but uh anyway, I just thought, so essentially what the budget, the annual budget's running about a half million dollars. Would y'all agree that that's probably? Would y'all agree that that's probably, uh, like you said, three hundred, a half million?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Each one of them are a little bit different.
But this one's not that huge of a facility and it's a half million, so I'm guessing, now, they said that, they built that for about three hundred and fifty. Uh, let's see, what was it? Uh, three and a half million dollars back in sixteen? And right now, the judge estimated that'd probably be seven hundred, over sev- uh, over seven million dollar facility to build that again, so. But I just thought I'd kind of put some numbers together and at least have a budget that's in operation. Okay.
Well, like I say, those are estimating numbers and I'm not, I don't think that it would be quite that much. The arena itself is not going to cost that much. I've got quotes and prices and put these prices, uh, on all that. Let's see, it's prepared for the committee whenever we get ready to meet, so. I think the biggest expense is going to be, as far as on the conference side of it, that's one thing that Leon County is not, they don't do, is to host conferences and stuff. That's what's going to have the most impact on our economy as far as income coming in. That's like, uh, Brazos County, that's one of their biggest breadwinners for their, their county overall because of the, what they bring in. We've got a lot of people wanting to come in to have, I say a lot, I've had about three contacts about the dog shows and the different things that they have. The dog show is Leon County, one of their biggest hits. That makes them the most money. The arenas are day monies for them. They just, people are showing up and taking advantage of the events. But the dog shows are coming over there and staying for a week at a time, so they're booked out five years on it now.
I actually had another county call me. It wasn't a, it wasn't a county official or anything, but somebody that was involved in a lot of their economic development called me this day. Since, uh, a lot of the people going to their facility are coming to Anderson County and staying in hotel. They want to see if we give them some of their hotel motel tax. I kind of declined on that.
I would think so.
Hey, it's worth asking, you know?
Yes, sir.
I, I was kind of a no, no, I didn't, I don't think that'd even be legal. Uh, let me, let me ask, because these are questions that I have, uh, on a water resource out there. I know y'all had done some stuff back before I took office, but some of the people out there had concerns that I, that talked to me back, uh, during the election and said, there's no rural water system that can, and, uh, that can service that, that facility. So, that's kind of a question that needs to be answered and, uh, but in looking at the, the deed, when that one, I was in court when some of that was done back in the early days, when the court bought the property and all. And I think the mineral rights may still be in the, in text store's name. I don't, they're not the county's. So, I just want to make sure we got a concern if, uh, if there's a well or anything like that, if we, and, and I'm not a driller, so, uh, if we had a gas pocket and there's natural gas under that property in that salt dome, and I don't want to get us in a, in a position where somebody can come back in and say we violated that agreement, so.
We would not consider drilling at all there. We've got a, uh, basically, it's a verbal commitment from a water source that will supply the water and does have the water to supply for us. Uh, one did not. The, the local there, that was, was the most accessible, did not meet the demand. So, we went to another company and they said for sure that they would supply it. We went as far as, uh, the measurements of the upgrades and what they had to do to the lines, what roads they had to come down and how far. But doing and paying for the upgrades, you know, to, uh, meet this demand for their contract would be less than us digging the water wells. If we go in the water well business, then we have to have, uh, operators, we're going to have to manage the water. The salt dome is an issue there on the upper end of the land, on the, I guess you'd say the northwest end of the land. It, it's water accessible there if we wanted to drill. But the drilling part is, uh, there again, a big, huge commitment because we're going to have to supply, uh, the daily process of the management of the wells. So, it'd be cheaper just to go with the company to come in and do the upgrades for them and get the water source.
So, is that, is that, like, Rush Creek Water Supply?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are they going to put in a new well in that area?
Said they had enough water to supply, meet that, I, they know fully what it is, you know, how much and what the demands would be in participation and everything. They basically said they had enough water to, to meet any demand that we would have.
Okay. Well, some of the neighbors up there told me that they, they didn't have the volume to do it, so I, that's why I'm asking the question.
But I met with them themselves, so, I mean, I, I don't know.
I think a lot of these obstacles we can overcome as they come up, but I see this as, uh, something positive for the county, for the people that pay their taxes in Anderson County, something that they can physically use. Uh, they use these buildings, they use the courthouse, they use this and that, but that's usually to, uh, give money away or spend their money. It'd be nice if this court had something that they were responsible for that was a benefit to the taxpayers of Anderson County. And if things go right and over the years it gets optional, I think there'd be something there every year for at least every resident of Anderson County to attend something there that is part of something, you know, that's in their life, whether it's rodeo, a, a monster truck show, uh, whatever it might be, that, you know, everybody in the county would probably have one option a year to go out there and enjoy something that them and their family enjoy. So, I see it as giving back to the community, so I think all these little obstacles that come up that over time we can work through them and we can come up with something that gives a little bit back to the community.
Well, I think when they see the economic impact it has on it, just like with Henderson County, you know, when you get the impact in the economy anywhere from twenty to twenty-five million dollars a year, that's every mom and pop, every, you know, anything that's here to be able to bring money in. That money will stay here and will revolve, just keep going, rolling over and it'll stay with us. And we'll be making sales tax money off that. That'll give us an opportunity to get our sales tax up, which, you know, we haven't done this year at all or the last two years, actually, really to have much impact on that. That would give us something there. Our hotel motel tax is over seven hundred thousand dollars now, and we've not done really anything so much to enhance that. You know, and, and they are right, you know, uh, Henderson County says that most of the times during their events, they, the people have to stay in Anderson County to meet that, you know, to have the, the, meet the demands for their rooms and stuff, so.
I'd like to go through the whole process, just see the Anderson County Fair come back there.
Exactly.
As if you had that something I generally remember going to every year.
Yes.
And I just want the younger generation to be able to experience that.
Yes, sir. But I think it gives the whole community a way to actually congregate, to be able to get together and do something. And that's one thing that we're short of. Gary Thomas said that he was here whenever, um, you know, the fair was here. He said he'd take everybody, everything he had, direct traffic, people coming through here whenever the fairs were going on. But there's a lot of people that like to see the fair come back and to have access to something to be able to promote and push things. And when the word got out that we were considering it, we've had several reach out wanting from, you know, we had the five hundred squared dancers. They wanted us to host them. We've had, uh, real estate, uh, people wanting to have the real, I think East Texas is supposed to be hosting the real estate conferences and conventions this year, and they're saying they're going to take it over to Tyler to do it, you know, so. Uh, and this is their year to be able to host it, so. It's just things like that I'd like to be able to give them opportunity here to do, and it will enhance everybody's basic opportunity, you know, as far as income goes.
I'm looking forward to it. I say that I'm only going to get to be a part of what transpires in the next four months. Is that kind of where y'all want me to go, do a bond election?
Possibly, but I'd still like to meet with the committee and let's talk about it, if, you know.
Yeah, I think first, you just getting that committee together, the court getting that committee together to see what the ideas are or what might even be possible.
Okay.
Going out for a bond election to raise more money?
Do what now?
Going out for a bond election for the whole cost of project.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the whole point, when I started this process on the, these one with the ARPA, it's number one, and just like y'all, I don't want to lose two point two million dollars. So, the whole point was to try to get that one point seven back into fund balance and, and, uh, keep us from having a deficit, so.
Well, like I said, I think you showed a while ago where the deficit stands and that's in contingency, and I think you pointed that out to anybody who might be concerned that, that it is a deficit, but it is in contingency. And now, if we divide it out like we spoke a while ago, we will have it budgeted, uh, whether that transpires or not.
And it wouldn't be in contingency. It's going to be, it's going to be taken out of that line item. It's going to be put, transferred to other funds, out of the general fund, and then, just like the statute requires, have a designated project that those funds will be towards. Great.
Yes.
Okay. All right. What else?
Um, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I just had a couple, um, items I wanted to ask if y'all wanted to do, if they were small. Um, put a dollar in GCDR payment, just in case if the court does decide to do a payment next year, there's a dollar there and that'd be the perfect line for it. And then, uh, put a dollar in the hot fund salary other. I think right now it's just, uh, part-time, so if need be, you know, I should have a division.
But it needs to have a dollar in there so that.
Yeah, and a dollar.
If you have to move funds to it, yes.
Yeah, and then a dollar in health insurance. And then, um, I spoke with the sheriff last week about the elections phone, and they have, I'm sorry, what was the, what's the vendor that y'all go through? Ned? No, the. First step. Um, only law enforcement can get those phones, so they were gracious enough to say they'll pay for it if we move that thousand into their cell phone budget. Y'all want to do that?
For the elections phone?
Yes, otherwise elections wouldn't get such a deal.
Right.
That is, so, because I think it's, um, forty-two dollars a month.
Forty-four, uh.
Those are not going to.
In the free phone.
That's not.
Security service is provided for public safety, even if we had a catastrophe or some other problem. Everybody else would get kicked off of whatever available cellular towers there are, and First Act would still operate, which the, uh, elections clerks would have access to that and make, uh, communication a lot better should we ever have an emergency.
That's not going to cause y'all problems, is it?
No, no. Uh, the sheriff's job is to help do security for theirs, so I think it's a, it's a legitimate extension of that, uh, with the election security.
Okay.
So, the thousand that we were putting into elections, put that into the cell phone budget for the sheriff's office.
Of the sheriff's office.
And then they'll pay the entire bill.
Okay.
And then I had one more. I think that's it. Um, talking to the sheriff about the security service, um, person, instead of doing the eighty-four hundred, uh, instead of doing eighty-four hundred out of the Senate Bill twenty-two, um, they wanted to take money out of their gas and oil and just transfer that to that salary and it'd be there from now on. So, if, um, it, the Senate Bill twenty-two ever went away, he would just be making more, but.
To the security service fund?
Yes, instead of, because they wanted, they wanted the deputies to get as much money as they could out of Senate Bill twenty-two. So, if, if we took, if we had to put, uh, Bull in there, it would lower what we would pay the deputy.
I understand what you're doing, yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, when we were doing the math originally.
Can you pull that down on your desk?
Let me just, it's only going to take a minute, Judge.
So, Mark doesn't get on to me?
Yeah, he'll get on me too. He's just really nice about it when he does. Uh, when we did the math originally, because he sits out there in the, almost in the last page of the budget book, he was overlooked. And, uh, we didn't, didn't allow for that. In order to allow for him to be equitable to the others, we can take that money out of gas and oil, transfer it over without affecting anything that's already been done in SB twenty-two and still be, uh, uh, the maximum amount available to all the commission deputies to improve, to, uh, increase recruiting and retention. And if everything changes, if everything goes away, then we'll address that particular issue at that time sometime in the future, should that calamity ever arise. But we want to treat all the deputies the same, so Bull, Bull would get his, his slice of the pie appropriately if we do that transfer.
It would cost approximately ten thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. That would come out of their gas and oil.
Okay. Page forty-five. You okay with that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. He's taking it out of, within his budget and moving it.
We're already transferring funds and the security service fund doesn't take care of that, even the salary. So, we're transferring general fund money over there already. If you look at the security service fund, there's.
Where is it at? That's what I was looking for.
Uh. What page is that? Well, it should be on the, in the front of your book.
One oh six.
There's a table of content.
One oh six.
One oh six. You'll see there's a line item on the revenue side. You got a revenue page and expenditure page.
Revenue page one five.
Is that the revenue or expenditure?
Uh.
Revenue's one oh five.
Okay, so you'll see transfer from other funds.
Okay.
There's money that's, there's money that's having to be transferred in from the general fund. So. With what he's doing, that doesn't change the deficit. That's basically just a transfer. Should be, what would be the eighty-four hundred plus whatever the withholding is for them?
Yes, it would be ten thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars total.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't.
Y'all good with doing that?
I'm good with it.
All right, just, we'll do it, Mike.
Yes, sir. That's all I had.
Okay, I got some questions on, y'all got your budget books, so I'm going to get you.
Yes, sir.
Leave it with me on it. I'm going to start with page forty-eight. I've got a question on that. And that's going to be public, uh, safety personnel bond office.
Forty-eight.
Page forty-eight. And on our little summary here, for the first proposal, it shows that that office was increased by three hundred and fifty dollars, which it was here, but up here, it's got about fifty-six thousand nine twenty-three.
That's the position that was in the sheriff's office.
That's what I was asking. That's the one that we added to it. We added another position to that, right?
No.
No, this year the court added a position to the sheriff's office for the personnel, for the bond coordinator, and it was in the sheriff's office. And I had already thought it, but then the sheriff had requested that it be moved to the personal bond office because that would be the appropriate, appropriate place that it should be, so that's what we did.
So, essentially, what happened was, in, in, when we were going through all the salaries, then I had that error up there showing that, that we created, if you remember, we created a temporary bond coordinator to see how it worked, okay? And if you remember, when I started presenting the budget, I told you that was one full-time position that we went ahead and, and went from temporary, when it put it in the budget, it was a full-time position. But it was in the sheriff's office budget, like Megan said. He wanted it moved to the bond office. So, it, it, it's still the same.
Yeah, I got it. It just, on this, where it showed, you know, any things that expenditures added to, which it says a general fund, I just couldn't, it see, I didn't know, that didn't change the general fund, but it just changed the position?
Well, it did change the general fund in that it went from temporary to a full-time salary.
And it just missed here, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, but all that was.
I didn't leave it on there because I didn't add the budget.
Okay.
Yes, well, that's what I was saying, right, so it didn't add to the budget, but I didn't realize it was just shifted, moved.
But anytime, what I was trying to show is, if we created a full-time position, we want to make sure the court was aware of that. And it went from temporary to full-time, okay? We did that in the proposal. And then the other full-time position, uh, was the shop mechanic went to the elections coordinator, so that was a. And then the other full-time position, uh, was the shop mechanic went to the elections coordinator, so that was a wash. So we didn't essentially have to create a new position. It just went to a different function. So those were the only real two new positions in our budget.
Yeah. Then on the fifty-four, that's the expo, you know, it's got the twenty-five thousand, and I guess we just put that in there to, in case we got somebody working on it, so that's twenty-five.
We just left it to what it was.
Yeah, that's it is, just left. If we needed it, then we'd go back to it, um. I was on that. Now then, on the. Everything else is pretty close, so. The salary, hourly that we have in the courthouse, it's gonna pay those boys that are working, right? Some of them just work by the hour, the courthouse budget, the, uh.
The hourly's, we're, that's our summer help.
Yes, what I thought.
For the most part, and I have, I figured out where I can get, uh, three different individuals. Last year I had, uh, two college and one high school graduate, two, two of them were in college and they worked through the summer. We got a lot of projects done.
Yeah.
Same thing this year.
Who's earning the overtime there in the courthouse?
That would be James and Orville.
Okay.
If they work overtime.
Okay. Then, on the elections office, uh, I hadn't yet talked to Casey yet because she was at conference last week. We still got the fourteen-five in there for overtime, which they've only used two hundred and twenty-one of it, and I know you're anticipating that she'd use more, but we got her another position in there, so I wanted to talk to her and see if she thought that that would cut back on her overtime some.
I talked to her yesterday. She was sick last week. She didn't get to go to her conference.
Oh, she didn't?
No, but, uh, she was up here working yesterday and I was up here working, so, uh, I mean, I explained to her what the court did is, she's got her salary, and then if she works overtime, she's put in for overtime, we got budgeted funds in there. If, if we don't have the budgeted funds, then we're gonna have to do budget amendments i- if she's got overtime.
But can she not take time off, just like with having that extra help in there? That's what our Roden Bridge does and a lot of others, so.
I'm not inclined to take somebody that's already working forty hours and, and tell them to take time off, so. I mean, if they work the overtime, that's, the sheriff's department's a little bit different. They've got a different situ- situ- situation to anybody else in the county. But when elections happen and, and she's working overtime, then she needs to get paid for it. So, i- if we don't use it, then it's, it stays in the, stays in the general fund. But at least you're supposed to, when you're doing the budget, you're supposed to anticipate that you may have those costs. The whole point is to not have too many budget amendments through the year. We're getting better, I think, because we've been putting the line items, the, the money in the line items where we're at, looking at what our past expenditures are, and that's been.
So has she not been compensated for any overtime for all the years from, I mean.
See, she's been exempt all these years.
Yeah.
She's been exempt. She didn't get overtime.
So whoever's getting the three hundred this year and the thousand.
What, what you see, what you see in that overtime are election workers, hourly election workers.
Election worker.
Yeah.
So now just anticipating just her commitment to that, but adding the other positions is my concern of spending that other, you know, sixty-five thousand or whatever it's gonna cost us to have her some more help, and then was that gonna allow her to have some assistance to cut her overtime out or cut it down, you know?
The whole point is, looking at this optimistically, if she retires in two years, who's gonna take her place? So trying to get some extra.
I understand that.
To train somebody, and i- if you're doing the job, it takes extra effort to do the job and, and train somebody right along with you.
Alright.
So that, that takes extra time. It's not like if, you know, I, I, I'm gonna come in here and, and, or one of us is gonna go do a job, one of our hands is gonna go do a job. If they're training somebody right along, it takes more time than it does just them going to do it in the job. There, there's, there's a time constraints to training people, and with everything that they've got going on and the changes in legislation with regard to elections, election security and everything else, then she puts in the time. So, I mean, she's having to be, go out here and tell people to move their vehicles and everything else during the.
No, I don't think, nobody disagrees with you on that. Yeah, that's the why I left it on.
All it is, is it gives us the funds in the, in that fund.
That's right.
Just like anybody else's overtime, if it doesn't get used, it goes back into the fund balance, but it's there if there's overtime.
But there, I think there should be special attention to that office being that the demand of that, I mean, she has to be there during the elections. That's why I left that one, to where I wanted to talk to her about it. But on her supplies, like she's got thirty thousand, you six hundred and forty-one, and we got thirty thousand in there again. What kinda, what's the supply and demand that we're gonna have? What we need to thirty thousand in there?
I can answer that. A lot of that is that she buys it during the year and then she gets reimbursed from the party. So she might hit thirty thousand, but then when she gets reimbursed, it goes back into it.
Okay.
So that's why it's so high.
Okay, and then the election machines, same way, we got thirty-three thousand back in there again. Are we anticipating buying more? Are we done with that?
Those are not machines. Those are the, that's the maintenance, I believe.
It just says election voting machines.
I know, but that's the, that, 'cause that wouldn't go there. They would be capitalized.
They have contractors that have to come in and maintain them. Go through them and make sure that they're operational and no problems.
Because like last, last year we spent, in twenty twenty-three, we spent twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, and I believe we got some more this year.
Some back.
No, we got more machines this year, or maybe it was last year, so, but we haven't paid any this year.
We bought twelve machines last year, I think. 'Cause now you've gotta have more out at the polling places than, uh.
Okay. I got a few more here I need to go through. That, um, well, we put the other voting box for shots. Is that the Green Acres, whatever?
Green Bay, good.
Green Bay.
Green Bay.
And then where, where we had to lease it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause they're letting us use their, the whole point of doing the lease is that they let us connect into their electricity, so they're paying electric bill.
Is it a hundred fifty a month? We give them a hundred, what is it?
Basically, it's twelve hundred a year.
Yes, sir.
Hundred dollars a month.
Yes, sir.
But the building's gotta stay there twenty-four sevens.
Yes, it's up to their wire, their water and everything.
Okay.
So that was to help them offset their costs.
In our miscellaneous, she probably, well, she's got. On our miscellaneous that we've got, you know, with showman.
What page is it on?
It's gonna be on twenty-five.
Page twenty-five?
Yes, sir, twenty-five. And where's the insurance deductibles, you know, with the fifty thousand? What is the, what is that for? I mean, I know what deductibles are, but, I mean, is that what? We spent sixteen, we got fifty in there. I don't know what they're anticipating spending.
I don't know. I need to double check, but it's probably gonna be the Texas O Chicks account.
Alright, so what about the, uh, professional services? You know, we spent zero all the way across, we put the, wait just a minute, make sure I'm on the right spot.
Professional services.
Zero on twenty-one and did it.
But.
Okay, that's not gonna be what I was looking at then.
That's probably gonna be, uh.
Contingency.
It went from twenty-five, fifty, seven, something.
Yeah. Yeah, it went from twenty-five to fifty on the professional services. We showed up to date, we spent five thousand one nineteen, but we jumped it from twenty-five.
I'll have to ask Megan if that's where, uh, some of the legal fees for Allison Bass, and sometimes, some of that stuff may not get accounted to the expenditure side. There's some things she has a delay in.
Down on the bottom.
Where that actually gets applied in the expenditures. I got, I'll have to ask Megan.
Okay, and then, uh, the same with the others, you know, we spent fourteen thousand three hundred, we got fifty, and we'll put fifty more. And I understand it's just, you know, I don't, you won't call it padding it to where it's safe, but there's, you put it all together, six, seven hundred thousand dollars of padded money.
But we, I mean, we've been doing Union Pacific, uh, railroad lawsuits, so that's.
Yeah, does that come out of others?
I, I'm not sure which line item. That's probably professional services.
And then the contingency there went from five hundred down to three hundred, which.
Well, that's what we were talking about, uh.
Yeah, earlier.
Last year, it was, we added two hundred thousand to contingency, uh, just in case the sheriff needed o- other jailers. That was what that was for.
Yes.
Okay, so we backed that back out, but now we put it back in. That's what we talked about earlier. In case there's repairs, then we'd have, uh, funds available to help them with that, okay? So that's gonna, that's gonna be a half million now.
Yeah, it's gonna go back up.
Back to that million like last year.
So it'll be back to half a million.
If we don't have to spend it, we don't have to spend it. That's, that's, but it's available, 'cause if you don't have it in the budget, you can't spend it.
No, I agree. That's one thing, you know, we need to look at, that the public needs to know, that, you know, there's quite a bit of money that's put in there just for backup, you know?
Well, like I said, it's five hundred as to when this was printed, none of it's been spent, so.
That's right, yeah. Did five hundred thousand, none of it got spent.
But some of these you have to have in there just 'cause you don't know what's coming up.
But, I mean, just as a taxpayer's concern, they need to know that, you know, we've got several hundred thousand dollars of cushion, I guess you wanna call it, instead of padding, this cushion of monies that we can go back to if we need it, so.
Well, here, here's a good, here's a good example, uh, in, let's say, an air conditioner, okay? Air conditioner goes out on a jail, it goes out on.
That's right.
The annex, it goes out on courthouse, uh, anything like that, and we gotta take.
But we could, and on those kind of deals, we go into, uh, general fund on emergency, couldn't we?
Well.
And it makes the numbers look better.
Then you have to declare the emergency. If you already have it budgeted as a contingency, then you don't have to worry about declaring an emergency. And, and emergencies, i- it's like, you've got a major washout, you know, we had that before and y'all been dealing with some of that. One in three fifty-nine got washed out. So if the month, there wasn't any money and we had to go into fund balance, you have to declare the emergency. But if you have some money bu- budgeted, preparing that, you know, you may have something happen during the year. We may have, hopefully not, but, you know, major fires, where we gotta deal with some things like that.
Well, I'd say just for people to understand that we don't show a deficit this year, but there are monies there that we have to set aside in case it comes up. The line right above that's autopsies, uh, we budgeted two hundred and forty thousand, we spent sixty-one.
That's right.
Uh, so if it doubles, we're at a hundred and twenty, but it could triple. You don't know. That's an unpredictable item, but the county has to have money there to cover whatever arises, so, I mean, if that even doubles, there's a hundred and twenty thousand we budgeted that would get used.
That's right.
We're aware of that, so.
But it's just like with the, uh, you know, with the capital, uh, or the central appraisal district, uh, you know, we had to pay them the four hundred and eighty thousand. Well, you know, there's, sometimes we get credits back from them, so it could be five hundred, it'd be fifty thousand. So, you know, all that won't be known till, you know, till the last, at the end of the deal. But now on the transfer of other funds on that page, we already down to the bottom, went from one twenty-nine to one seventy-six. What comes out of that?
It's noted at the bottom. Fifty-six thousand is the Fund Two Seventy-four, which is VaWAA and Voca cash match. Twenty thousand is the security service fund and a hundred thousand to Juvenile.
Okay.
And the twenty thousand's gonna go up, great?
Yes, but that'll be washed with us, so.
That'll go up to the, the, another ten.
Yes. Um, last year, the, there was only a VaWAA cash match, but this year we have to do a Voca cash match as well, 'cause they cut that out for a couple of years.
And, and on our others in that account, what do we normally pay with that?
Others.
We go, on there's other fifty thousand.
Well, that's just other things that.
Just any thing?
No, it's things that go to different funds, like, um, a few things is gonna be, off the top of my head, grants, like Joey had a grant last year, and then the, the CTIF grant, those, if there's matches, it runs through that, so we can put it in a different fund.
And just like we had, we had, uh, batteries, it went down to keep the repeaters up. We had to replace batteries. That gives us a place to go get that.
To go back and get that.
Instead of taking it, it's not in tower, really.
No, professional services with that, what comes out of that? Who are we paying for that?
Allison Bass McGee.
Fifty thousand, went up from twenty to fifty thousand, so, but that could be the railroad, anything.
That's mainly the railroad and, um, all the agreements that run through court that y'all do, that y'all consult with.
Another question to ask Megan, we just gone on the insurance deductible, what exactly is that?
I guess it'd be the usage more than anything, right?
That's the, um, the deductible, um, if we have a claim, like a.
And be on the.
I go to the doctor and they charge me?
No, no, this is like.
No.
No, that's.
Insurance.
It's like.
Oh, auto, okay.
Lawsuit.
Okay, that's.
Like we pay, generally we pay ten thousand for each claim, up to ten thousand for each claim.
Anytime you have to pay, okay, alright, makes sense. Okay, next page, twenty-six. That's gonna be IT. First one, the salary hourly. We put that in there last year at toward the end of the year to get the extra help. Now, we've already gotten two more hands. Do we still need the twenty thousand in there, the twenty thousand eight hundred? Or just leave some in there, or do we need it?
Well, if we needed some extra help or something, it just gives us an opportunity to do that. By doing that last year, we had somebody working part-time. We were able to mo- move in full-time.
That's right.
And they had three in cybersecurity, so, uh, if we hadn't had that person, then we wouldn't have had them available, so. By giving us that, that in case we do need some help, then that just gives us an opportunity. If we don't need it, we won't use it.
Yes, but I've got a, a proposal to, to enhance precinct one and precinct three's budget to, uh, try to get a little bit of help for them, where precinct two and precinct, uh, four have both received other, uh, positions. You know, so they have had some enhancements, we have not, so I'm trying to find a little bit of money without having to go back in the general fund and get more money out to enhance, uh, Kenneth and myself. So that's what I'm looking for, is to try to find a little bit of money. But there's some more money here, just like with our, uh, with the conferences, you got the twenty thousand. And I know you got the new guys, they've spent less than eight thousand this year. Is it necessary that they have twenty, or can we take ten from there? You know, and if we take ten from there and twenty from here, you know, and then like on our, uh, uh, computer services, you know, we're at six hundred and fifty thousand, we spent two hundred and eighty-seven, and I don't know, are we anticipating buying a bunch more equipment for IT? 'Cause we put that in there, I think, whenever we was in contract with a third party, more of that as well, you know, whenever that money went in there, when you look back. That happened in twenty-two. We could take some of the money out of there.
We just took and moved ten thousand dollars over to the sheriff's, uh, to the security service fund for, for making sure that we were able to take care of whatever their needs are. I don't see us taking stuff out of IT, 'cause IT is, i- i- you got a lot of unknowns and it's a critical infrastructure for everybody in the county. If I, if IT doesn't have the resources to do what it needs to do, then there's potential for everybody in the county, so, so. I, I'm not sure why we're going to IT to try to, to.
Because I think it's, I think that IT has been, been enhanced, you know, back in the last few years to meet the, the demands of what our contracts were. And now then we've got, you know, I mean, we've got, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unspent money this year in there.
But that went back to the fund balance.
It did, and it's back out again into the new one.
So the idea is, is each of the elected officials, each of the departments have enough budget to take care of all their needs. And if there's any ca- anything critical that happens, they can still take care of it without having to, to worry about emergencies that happen or things that happen. So by cutting budgets, then you tend to, in it, you, you tend to, uh, get those people spending the rest of their budget because they don't wanna lose it. So the whole point is, is if you can underspend it, underspend it, so.
That's right, but IT is gonna be under the directions of the commissioners' court, so, I mean, they don't really have the opportunity to spend theirs like it would be with these other offices, so. I mean, basically, we manage that office on what we spend.
Actually, that's my department that I, that I, I supervise.
You supervise it under our direction, that's right.
When that budget is budgeted, then, then the court's authorized that if we need something, that those monies, just like Roden Bridge, if you've got money for cupboards, you don't have to come ask to go buy cupboards. The court doesn't have to approve that. It's in your budget.
I'm elected to that position, though, and we appointed you to that position to, to manage it. That's why I'm saying, that's why we put a cap, a limitation on the expenditures, and it has to be passed through commissioners' court, and so does my cupboard. But my cupboard, I'm under the directions of the elections to be able to manage and run that office, so. I'm looking for help, though. I need something now, you know, to where we can do.
How much you, how much you looking to?
Seventy apiece for you and I, hundred, seventy apiece for you and I.
No, a hundred and forty?
A hundred and forty.
And that's for construction materials, what you're saying?
Yes, construction material for you and I, and that'll still leave, you know, precinct two will be approximately at about seven. Construction material for you and I, and that'll still leave, you know, precinct two will be approximately at about seven. Around seventy-two hundred a mile, Joey at about sixty-five hundred a mile, then that puts you at about fifty-seven a mile, and it'll put me at about fifty-one a mile. So, we're still under, you know, them, by, you know, this is not our, our FM money at all. You know, this is not that part of, this is just a, and with this not money that we divide, this is just money that's been appropriated throughout the, the whole system. I don't know how it got out of whack, but I would like to, you know, catch up some, to where, you know, they got the enhancements of the positions, which is a huge advantage for them, that they wouldn't have to pull out of their general budget to restructure. And I think, I don't think Rashad needed that yet, you know, as far as to have to restructure his budget to build a, a mechanic's position. So by us giving him the position, I think it helped him out tremendously, and, and, uh, I don't know if Joey agrees that, you know, he has his position enhanced his opportunities.
So basically, what you'd be looking for is close to a hundred and forty thousand dollars, somewhere in the budget to keep from.
Yes, mhm. And there's, you know, some other spots that we can get somewhere close, I still wanna go back to emergency management. You wanna look at that?
Basically, the departments that I supervise.
No, sir, you're absolutely incorrect. I think they're the ones that have been mismanaged, whether if it's at your hands or whoever. But, I mean, the other, uh, on emergency management, I mean, uh, th- they, we have, we, you are the emergency management.
Administrator.
Administrator, and we hired you a, a assistant, but that assistant has to have an assistant. So now we have an assistant with an assistant, and they wanna make overtime.
We have a, we have a coordinator.
That's right.
Person is emergency management coordinator.
Yes, sir, and that's.
And they have an emergency, a deputy emergency manager.
And if, and I'm not after you or your physicians, I just think that's lacking up. I don't think that emergency management needs the overtime budget they got, they could take their time off, just like Roden Bridge does, and not cost the taxpayers more money. If you put the money in there, they're gonna use it. You added a twenty-five thousand dollar, um, capital outlay fund, it's never been there, what is that? You know, I don't understand that, that.
Because there's tower, there, there's stuff that has to happen with the tower.
Needs to be designated for towers, not as just capital outlay that can be moved around, let's put an ear tag on it, then for towers.
We have repeaters that we have to take in the place, and some of them gotta be replaced.
We can put a permanent note in there for that.
That's what we can do.
I mean, that's in there.
But the overtime has been zero across the budget, you talk about them going for trees, no, I don't, we don't need them for trees, you know, whatever they do for that. The callouts on the.
What are we talking about?
On the, uh, overtime budget, for whatever they do extra and over, there's two of them, I think they could work that out, and still manage to take compensation time. So, then, on the, uh, the supplies which are there, they need to be there, they're only seventeen hundred. The, uh, equipment rental and lease, what do we rent, what's the lease?
That was for an ice machine.
Okay.
They used to have an ice machine, but it was taken in.
Yeah, so that, putting that back in to get an ice machine. And then the capital outlay is ten thousand, what it is.
That was put in, and we explained that at the beginning.
For the tower?
When I, that, that's, if they need batteries, there's a repeater, we were at the volunteer fire meeting the other night. And that's what they asked me about, that these, some of these repeaters are getting old, they need to be replaced. I said, give me an estimate on what it's gonna take to upgrade those, that keeps the sheriff up, that keeps Roden Bridge up.
Got you.
Okay, so those are repeaters, and that's why that was put in there, cause they estimated it at ten thousand dollars.
And that's ear tag for that, right?
It can be, if that's what the board.
Well, that's the intent of it.
That's what I would like to have that intended for that. But with the overtime money, and the only other where.
Three to do that.
That's fine, I mean, you can, we can ask them all that. Do y'all want to do that? Is what she's asking, the ear tag it for the batteries, or the upgrades, or for the towers, or anything?
I just found the page, which line I don't.
Where's the last line?
Page forty. That'll made it be designated for its purpose.
Well, if you designate for one, something specific, and we have another capital outlay, then you're, you're saying you can't use it for anything but that.
What would you ask, would you use it for?
If y'all have capital outlay in your budget, which you do, then basically, you use it for whatever you need it for, that falls into the capital outlay definition.
Okay.
That is, why, why restrict it? The whole point of putting it in there was to try to make sure we keep these systems upgraded on these repeater towers. But if something else were to happen, and it's, uh, during an ice storm, or during, uh, trees being knocked down, and power being out, that we need to, just like the air conditioner went out the other day, and it was ninety-one degrees in there where those repeater towers were, and they would shut down, and then you lose your communication for your emergency services. So. By having it saying capital outlay, you can go do whatever you need to do. It's the same as everybody else that's got capital outlay in their budget.
No, I understand, you just have never had it, and that's why I was asking the question about it. So it's not ever been that important, but today it is, and if that's where the court feels it needs to stay as capital outlay to use for whatever, you know, that's fine, I just, I don't want it to go up. I would like to, with the court, take their overtime out, leave it at the minimum amount like Roden Bridge does, and make them take their time off. We've got two assistants in there, one's tagged the coordinator, the other's tagging the assistant. And the reason I feel like that the court agreed to it in the beginning to have two in there, because we used to receive a grant, that paid for one of them, or approximately for one of them, now that grant's expired. So now then, that's a direct cost to the county, we're spending, uh, basically a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year for assistance in emergency management, which we do the sewers, and we gave them the subdivision to try to give them more things to do, other than that, emergencies, which we have not had in the history of Anderson County, basically, or utilize our emergency management room down there, other than drills and practices. But I understand it's, we're prepared for it, but I'm looking to cut some of the expenditure.
Emergencies commission?
No, I'm talking.
Storms all over the county.
Yes, sir.
Talking about that room down there.
I'm talking about the room to have to declare, everybody to come together to use. I'm not saying we don't have emergencies, we do have emergencies, but not to that level, is what I'm saying. I'm looking for money to enhance Roden Bridge, and I would like to take their.
What you're trying to do is, I understand, there's no sense arguing with you. It seems like there's been decisions already made, so do what you gotta do.
Decisions made, and what we have.
I don't, I don't, I take offense, and my employees keep getting attacked, IT got attacked.
They're not.
Emergency management's getting attacked.
Don't flatter, don't flatter yourself, Judge, I'm not in, it's not you that I'm after, I, so do my guys.
Well, I hadn't said a word about.
Maybe you need to be on Roden Bridge, maybe you need to make some of them calls, because if you think about it, of the hundreds of tree calls that I get, I make them. So, on these emergency management calls, that you are the head of it, maybe you can make some of it, to give them some break, so I know you're paying.
I'm not on the radio and listening to the radio.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And working with the emergency management coordinator, and the assistant during all these storms. So, you know, I, I'm not gonna sit here and attack any commissioner, okay? For what they have to do, if I'm not out there with, it's just like what we do, don't come attacking my people for what they do, when you're not there with them either. I know what Roden Bridge has to do. I understand that, and I know what emergency management has to do. I know the sheriff's responsibilities, the tax assessor collector, the JP's, their clerks, the district and the county clerks, I understand their positions. So, I try to give them the support to get their jobs done, okay? But all of a sudden, it's, you know, I, I understand what's going on, you know? Anybody watching is.
What's going on? Just explain to them in case somebody does.
You're trying to attack my department?
No, sir, I'm not. That's just your opinion, I'm not. I don't see why that we would have to pay overtime to somebody that we have the extra time to, that they can take compensatory time off. My guys do it every day, if that's the case, then I need to go back some comp, I mean, need, I need some overtime. I need, I need fifty thousand in my overtime, cause my guys, they take their time off. Does anybody else in here have that?
Yeah, all of this being said, we go back to something that Judge, uh, commented made, well, go about mines part of it made up. You need to clarify to me which mines you're talking about, Judge, cause if you're just.
I was gonna say.
I'm gonna disagree with you wholeheartedly by saying that, cause I don't appreciate that, cause you don't know where my mind's at. But one thing the Commissioner did bring up, that I'd like to go back to, is in the IT department, where the six hundred and fifty thousand is, just to ask the question. We spent two hundred and eighty-seven so far this year, what are we looking at that possibly the county is needing this year, just out of information from me? What might be something that the county has to buy this year to be the other three hundred and sixty-three thousand?
Is that in computer services?
It's in your.
What page are you on?
Yes, sir, county computer service.
Part of that are, are monthly and quarterly payments, so you pay Tyler Tech, and, um, yeah, licenses and all that stuff that we have to pay, that that's where that goes.
Well, I'm not just saying that, cause. Uh, page twenty-six.
Yeah, cause that, like I said, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you go to any of these precinct budgets. Uh, so I don't, I think that was a valid point for the Commissioner to bring up, I mean, are, what's your construction budget?
Uh, let me look.
I mean, cause right now it's two eighty-seven, and this is at the end of June, so I mean, double it maybe?
Ask, like I said, that is, that is one thing the Commissioner brought up that I do see, I didn't know exactly what that was.
One of the things they did a couple of years ago was take, and at the end, when they had some monies left, they bought computers, so that way, they don't have to try to do that. If somebody needs one, they can go put it on their desk. We've had people that had to have a computer that crashed, they've got it available, so, and they've been changing out computers for all the different clerks, correct, Mark? Y'all change, that they're going through and changing out computers, and giving them upgraded computers, so that they've got updated stuff.
Well, that was a question I did have that brought up, but I still like to clarify the point that the mines are made up, cause I don't, uh.
No, sir.
Okay, well, that's great.
Yeah, cause I've not talked to y'all about it, that's why I'm here today, propose to y'all, my address. But I don't know if anybody here has any other advice, uh, on where to look at any departments that you can take something from. You're not gonna take it from the district clerk, the county clerk, the sheriff's department, everybody is pretty tight and fixed. I think there's a little gap there that we can either take a little bit out of, of, um, the, I disagree with the overtime for those two, I think they could share their responsibilities. You know, I, like Roden Bridge does, I don't see them to be any different than that, you know, for me on that, and on IT, that we could take something out of there to get the one forty, so that we don't have to go into general fund. If there's any other angle y'all think, you can see that where we can cut, you know, any, anybody, I don't see anybody else that you can. You know, I just think there's a lot of extra money in the, uh, there's enough extra money in that, uh, um, the IT department, which we're all responsible for and over, you know, as far as Judge on the daily routines, and I appreciate what he does for it, but on the other, on the overtime, I think that's a overkill for that, and I think that they're gonna utilize that, uh, you know, because they can, and I think that, I don't think that's fair to Roden Bridge personally, but that's my opinion.
What do we have in our hourly? We start out with a thousand?
I've got a thousand dollars in it.
Your overtime?
Yeah, in my overtime, I've got more money in my hourly, but in my overtime, I keep a thousand dollars, and we don't even use it really. I mean, I don't use it, I just, my guys commit back to taking time off. And there's a lot of lack time that can be taken time off to, to justify that, and they get time and a half off with pay.
Well, so far, year to date, mine's twenty-four hundred, cause I have allowed people to get paid for it. When they asked me if they could, I've allowed it, uh, because this was a very unusual year, uh, as far as, so. It's still at twenty-four hundred dollars.
That's, that's, with the exception of Greg, I, all, all three, the rest of the three of y'all, y'all usually have overtime, more than that.
We've had overtime because of.
I mean, if you go back then and change it, put twenty-five hundred, to be what y'all get, and the rest of the time, let them take off.
Well, I agree with you on the increase in the two construction material budgets. Uh, I know that sounds kind of selfish to me, I do agree with you on that. Uh, like I say, the full construction budget, not counting the two ten for Roden Bridge Precinct Three, is three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. None, I mean, not, I'm not taking anything away from any of y'all, I know all of y'all's is low, I understand that, uh.
What's the three, what was it for, what'd you say?
My construction materials, three forty-seven.
Yeah. But, I mean, if you do, if you'll take the total expenditures of, of your precinct's budget, and divide it by your mileage.
Yes, sir.
I've got it all written.
Yeah, I wrote it down all day.
I've got it right here. Okay, on precinct one, the total expenditures is one million, four eleven, three seventy-two. I've got two hundred and eighty-nine miles, um, yeah, two hundred and eighty-nine miles. Divide that into it, that gives me four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars a mile. Alright, on Rashad's total, it's one million, one ninety-eight, three ninety, he's got a hundred and sixty-seven miles. Divided in, he's got seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars per mile, a lot for years. Is, uh, one five twelve, two sixty-nine, it's two hundred and ninety-five miles, which you have the most miles, you're at fifty-one, twenty-six per mile. And Joey's is at one three nineteen, one hundred, and that's at, uh, two hundred and ten miles, he's gets sixty-two, uh, eighty-one. So there, it's sixty-two and seventy-five, and you're at fifty-one, and I'm at forty-eight thousand a mile. That's not, you know, that's not our FM money, our FM money that we divide, we divide it by mileage. You know, and that's always been some of the discussion that I've heard over the time, of, of the fairness of how it's divided. But this is not divided, this is just being created over time, and, you know, salaries have been given, and different things that have been, the way that these positions, or these, uh, precincts have been developed. And I think the precinct one and, and, uh, three are behind, but I just think on the hand of that precinct two just received a position, and precinct four has received a position, that, that even widened the gap, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
So I just thought that would give us a way that we could close the gap a little.
Stating it, because we got position from the shop, and Joey got a position from the shop, they enhanced our budget. But when y'all had y'all mechanic's position, y'all just took them out of.
Out of our, existed, what it was, the.
But equally, equally, we have ten, and then, then, I understand how you do your figures for the, uh, percentage wise, mileage per road, but for me, when you do the figures, if you take away a lot of salary portion, then just use the bottom portion of other expenses, that's when you come up with mileage per road, as I said to you before.
Yeah, if you take away the.
Trying to add to Commissioner Maum, the Commissioner Hill, Rosen's road?
No, sir.
No, Commissioner, uh, Dixon and myself, and I rode construction.
So what about two and four?
Well, that's what I say, they just both got.
They've got the least amount of construction money.
They do have the least amount with the least amount of roads too, you know what I'm saying? I mean, uh, Kenneth's got three hundred miles, and Rashad's got a hundred and sixty-seven, so he's got, you know, a little more than half, but he's got less construction money, but he got half the road.
Well, I understand, but.
Well, I, I think what he's trying to say is, what was it, three years ago, I got the position from the shop.
And then y'all just gave me one.
They put it into precinct four, so that upped my budget. Rashad just got a, uh, another position, and that upped his budget. And when they got their mechanic positions, they created them within their budget.
It's just like.
That would've been an easier approach.
The person, the mechanic, was actually serving, how many precincts, that was in the shop?
Any of them.
But he come to my precinct, and was working his for precinct four.
But the, the shop form, that was the one that went to Rashad?
That position.
Yeah, he wanted the highest position we gave him.
Basically a wash, but he was, he was helping precinct three, precinct four, precinct two, I know, very, long time ago, was probably had the longest time, position of a mechanic, cause I know Joe had one.
Joe had one. But most of those positions would've had to been whatever they allotted amounts for, I don't know how they develop them, that was before my time. But if you take the lower end, just like Rashad says, you know, with mine, at the, uh, six forty-four oh one, I, I, gives me twenty-two, twenty-eight a mile, and you do, Rashad, he got, that gives him twenty-seven, fifty-two a mile. So he's still, even just on the lower end, I'm just trying to get us to be able to get back up closer to where the rest of them have in operating money. And I know precinct three should be like me, you know, I mean, we got a lot of miles and a lot of, lot of demands, so.
Well, we, we added, we added four hundred thousand last year.
We did.
And we left it in the budget this year, that's an extra hundred thousand. And we left it in the budget this year, that's an extra hundred thousand for precinct.
That's right.
If you wanna do that, then the, the same thing, you don't have to have it every year, but if you wanna add it, add it out of contention or out of fund balance. Just budget it out of fund balance. Don't do anything to the rest of the budget.
But that brings fund balance down even more. That's been a big concern for yourself, you know, and that's why I'm thinking.
I, I understand.
We could get it out of these positions that, you know, that I think that are padded well enough to where they're safe enough to get it, but.
I wouldn't have any problem taking it out of fund balance, but that's only, I know that's only one vote.
But that's gonna pull us down there with another hundred and forty thousand down below. I personally.
If others have the money available and they don't spend it, then it doesn't.
It don't matter, but that's right, but it just.
I mean, I think underspend, the whole, the whole goal is for everybody to have the things they, the funds available to do the job, and then underspend the budget, so.
Yeah, with road bridges, it's a little different, so we have to look at that three hundred and something thousand dollars and say, okay, this is all I can do this year.
Well, like mine, I just figured mine, I get sixteen hundred and forty dollars per mile. And the lay a mile of road, it's costing me anywhere from forty-eight to about fifty-two, fifty-four thousand dollars, that's me grinding it. And that's just material, yeah, that's me grinding it, adding oil to it, mixing it and laying it down.
That's right.
Well, I don't, I mean, that's gonna be an argument to be made every.
Right, and I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's.
I'm talking about all four of us.
There's no way to, we're gonna ever be able to get it to where it really needs to be.
It, it's hard, well, I mean, you're gonna take the bottom end of everything, Joey, that's the way we do. You know, I mean, everybody from, it don't matter if it's the auditor's office to the district, county clerks, uh, sheriffs, everybody gets what they gotta have to operate, and when it's over, Roden Bridge is gonna get what's left.
I think, I understand what you're saying, but I can echo Joey's comments, 'cause if you break mine down to a hundred and twenty-four, I get in construction material, just that alone. I know you go off the whole budget bottom, but that's uniforms, that's equipment leasing rentals, that's principal payments, that's entry payments, all this. You had to get a capital outlet in case you buy a piece of equipment, and if we don't use that equipment, then we do have the right, like you were talking about that line item, you could transfer an IT department some money back up to, and he can use it for whatever. Then we can use it on road materials, but if you take a hundred and twenty-four that I'm allowed it for construction materials, just say one hundred, not one ten, I mean, not two-ten, then per mile out of a hundred and sixty-seven, because I cleaned up precinct two's actual road mileage buzz, budget to put it up right for the Gatsby twenty-two that we have to do, uh, I mean, Gatsby, uh, thirty-four that we have to do. Still, Anderson County shows precinct two to have a hundred, I mean, two-ten on the mileage, but I put one sixty-seven, it'd be legal by the local government code.
That's what I did.
Because of some of those are driveways that I feel they got pushed and put into precinct two years ago, so I have no houses on. But anyway, back to the mileage standpoint, a hundred and twenty-four divided by one sixty-seven, I get seven hundred and forty-six dollars per mile. You can't do that, so I think the argument needs to be argued a different way. Uh, it could be stated that precinct two and precinct four received a mechanic budget, and precinct three and precinct one would like to have that same.
Just the same as what you got.
Without taking away from the ten employees that you have, or your regular construction employees that you have. I think that would've been a better approach for that one. As far as it goes with, uh, thinking some of the court, our minds already together to be against people. I don't think nobody here trying to be against one person or anybody on the court. And, uh, when it come to that thirteen-five, that threw off the whole court, I believe it shook us all. It was like a, an untended earthquake, because what happened was, we're getting told that federal government changed regulations, and now these people are not exempted. And to make them exempt, we need to give them this big of a raise and put them to this point, where no one else in the county is getting ten thousand plus in a raise at one time. Uh, except for some of the people, which they're not even getting in the sheriff's department, but that's due to a grant. Uh, so I can see where the question, concerns come in there. Um, I know that it put certain employees at play, and people think that those employees are getting picked at or talked about. I don't think so at all, uh, uh, to be legally enbinding, I believe that the emergency management versus elections department, you can't, you can't weigh them out on the same total vote. Both of them are in high-demand positions, but we know with the election coordinator and what needs to be done here in Anderson County, the elections department, there's no questions about it, there's no way around it. If no one is here for the elections in the fashion they have to be, and with all the different stuff that's coming out from the state and federal government, then we're in trouble, not only us, this court, that's all of Anderson County elected officials, that's all the way from the state to the White House. We have to have that position the way it has to be. Now, the federal law has changed, it's caused some issues, that's been, that's came to us, we're trying to understand those issues. It does throw certain people into this category that has no voice up here, speaking on emergency management, speaking on, uh, 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 Ms. Brown. But what is the answer? No one else up here knows the answer, except say, hey, here's thirteen-five, do what you wanna do with it. Before, the thirteen-five hasn't been there, we're not saying that they're not gonna get the overtime. I'm pretty sure if you put thirteen extra five in my position, in one, any one of my positions on my, um, say my foreman, or say the new mechanic position, you know what that guy's gonna do if he gave it to the sheriff or his department?
They gonna use.
Those jailers or those deputies gonna run all that overtime of thirteen-five, and they gonna get it. There's an added salary to their budget, I mean, there's added money to their salary.
That's right.
The officers paying a tremendous amount.
I know.
But they're gonna be, they're gonna be fiddled about like.
I think they said it was forty-five thousand in the last budget.
But I think that's.
That's, that's just like you stated though, Judge, because his jail count is, I mean, because his jail count, and he's, he's short-staffed to re- reset jail count, so he has to make it operative, so we don't be in violation of the jail, uh, standards.
If somebody leaves and they're owed overtime, or they want to be paid overtime, we gotta pay them overtime.
Yes.
If they work the time, we've got to pay them overtime. The only reason those funds were put in there is if they did work overtime, then we had the funds available to pay. It's the same as any other budget item. If we don't have to use it, we'll return it to the fund balance. It made it available where I don't have to come and we start doing budget amendments during the middle of the year.
Well, that's not a problem, but, you know, with budget amendments, aren't that, Art Megg said if the money's not in it, it just won't be paid, they have to take it off. You know what I'm saying, basically, what it boils.
Or it'll go on to the next payroll.
It's going to the next payroll.
Well, I think what, I don't know, this is where I was finishing up, but I didn't get to finish. I think we just, the number thirteen-five, from what I see, was put in there because of the offset of what they say the new federal regulation is.
I agree.
I don't see.
And that was to gi, and that was to give the commissioners an opportunity to set it up.
Okay, so if we. If, if you give an opportunity.
But if not, then, then there was line item in there for overtime.
Yes, sir, so to give an opportunity, why can't we agree on a number or something? And not just say, here's what it has required to be thirteen-five, and that's it.
Cut it down.
And I think that's the problem that the court is having right now.
I think it needs to be cut lower than, you know, if we meet what Kenneth said.
And it won't look like we're playing with certain employees here or there, or picking at this one department or this one department. We're not, it was just someone's thrown at people.
That's right.
And it needs to be fixed or addressed. The time to address it is now, and to address it is gonna make.
Yes, sir.
This person uncomfortable is gonna make this person uncomfortable, but this is the hard duties that we ask the people to elect us to do, so we can get that answer for them, and I think that's what we gotta do right now.
Well, then I'll make a motion, we cut it to twenty-five hundred, that'd be the same what Kenneth says, and, uh, mine's at a thousand, and I mind, my, mine may be too low.
For both?
For one position, for the overtime?
For both departments or one department?
No, leave the, uh, the elections is gonna be like the sheriff. I mean, that's something that's, I mean, I think that they can work it out on the other end, and I think that they can share responsibilities at times. Sheriff can't make it, and Casey can't do her, she's got to be here.
Oh, I'm just clarifying which department we're speaking of.
So you're stating there's one, even though the judge's over elections, he's not required to do, actually, during certain elections in certain times, I know the judge can go in the back, but sometime around those ballot boxes, every judge is not even required to be back there.
Yes, sir.
I don't go back.
He has to come out.
He can't.
Well, that's somebody supervised, I don't.
It's only the election administrator that's required to be back there.
Yes, sir.
'Cause it may be the sheriff race, it may be my race, it may be his own race.
Mm-hmm.
Because we are so close proximity, he can't be back there, even though he's supervised.
So leave the elections alone, yes, right.
She's required to be where she has to be.
That's right, so just leave hers alone.
Emergency management, you're stating that we have three.
We have two.
Well, along with the judge.
Yeah, with the judge, yes, sir. Now, they can share that responsibility, and, and Casey's on her own.
I'm sorry, y'all, this is a deal with auction express, I gotta take this, 'cause he's trying to do a boom head for a mechanic touch. Yes, sir.
So what do y'all wanna change the overtime to for emergency management?
My motion be twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred for emergency management and overtime.
Motion by Commissioner Chapin to reduce the overtime line item budget, uh, to twenty-five hundred in emergency management overtime. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Dixon, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and I'll be opposed.
All right, IT, do y'all wanna? I mean, I was looking at that, just, I'm still, would like to help precinct three, precinct one out. And what I see is that they, I, I've jotted my notes down that there could be some cuts to the, uh, computer service parts of it. You know, if we did the hu, that, that give us about ten thousand out of the others, so we're up to, we're down to about one-thirty. If we can find a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of IT.
What, what page are you on, Mike?
I don't, I don't, I don't recommend taking a hundred and thirty out of county computer service, because a majority of that takes care of.
Twenty-six.
Paying for Tyler Tech, Net Data.
I mean, you're making a cut, and without knowing what you're cutting, I, I mean, I need to get Mike in here to at least, uh, defend that budget, because it's all lumped into that one, so he can take care of licenses, everything that Tyler Tech requires.
Okay, year-to-date right now, how accurate is that, where it says?
It's June.
To June?
At the top, it's June thirtieth, so that's six months worth of expenses.
Yeah, six months.
That's, that's.
We pay some of that quarterly, we pay some of it monthly.
And that's, that's kinda like, right now, y'all do road construction in summer. It might be that there's some expenditure that's gotta come out at a certain time of the year. That might not be a true picture exactly, I mean, first six months, it may not come out. It may come out in, uh, some kind of expenditures that have to be paid, uh, for licensing or anything else. 'Cause every one of these computers, we've got, uh, Microsoft Office three sixty that we have to pay for licensing on that stuff.
Okay, Megan, when you go back to like twenty-twenty-one actual, is that actually what was spent that year?
Yes.
So there's, there's what it could be right there for them last.
But all the licenses go up every year.
I understand that, but one year it was four forty-nine, it was six thirteen, there was a jump because of something, and four thirty-nine.
That was when we got the third party in there, I'm sure, you know, but it's been around four, four ninety to four thirty-nine is basically what it's been being.
And then, so that kinda gives you an idea where it could go.
Well, like what Judge said, I would, I mean, I would feel more comfortable, I mean, y'all can take it out, of course, but I would feel more comfortable with Mike coming in, because he knows exactly what's in these lines, in, in this.
He's, he's got it all broken, doesn't he?
Yes, so, I mean, I don't want it to get to the end of, of the year next year, and we don't have enough to pay.
No, I think you answered my question when you did it, 'cause like I say, just seeing that start with a big number, and then six to it, except the fact is, it could expand through the next half year if he pays licenses in November, let's say, when the license.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, some of them are so annual, and we may not have paid them yet.
Take it out. General fund?
Fund balance. And that won't change the overall budget.
It is basically go down.
It's all your stuff, right?
I like to see them in hand, not that I would get the opportunity to spend it.
Hundred thirty thousand dollars.
It's not, you think that it is about what needs to be done in the precincts, and it, it's difficult to do, there's no doubt.
But it still leaves five hundred twenty thou-
Bring, uh, bring, we make some copies of them.
Still leaves five hundred twenty thousand in there, if we take the one-thirty from there.
Takes you pretty quick. He's bringing a Excel list.
So, I mean.
I take a second, I told him I'd make coffee.
This is yours.
You need one?
No, I got it from this. I didn't bring but one, Judge.
Uh, mine's gonna be.
Yeah, well, I brought this picture too.
Sir? Yes, she, whenever she comes, I'll name. Pardon it, Lisa.
Wish you a great day.
Huh?
She bringing a drink?
No. Okay, what'd you put on your track, sixteen-five? On your track, sixteen-five?
Yeah.
So what do you have listed for on Facebook?
I don't have it on Facebook.
Grant asked me that, and I said, I don't know, he said something about fifteen-five, so if you get listed for fifteen-five.
No, I don't, Grant said he was gonna put it on Facebook.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it on Facebook.
Okay.
Double against sixteen-five.
So Grant told you, you must keep it up.
Yeah.
Passing through, yeah.
Mark, you'll come to work for me after this? Yeah, material we're lands, you shoot it when I've gone. Yeah, material lands, you shoot it one of gun.
Thank you.
Uh, no.
Well, and that last page, sorry about that. That last page. Where'd it go? I'll mine it. For some reason, it rolled over to that other page. So.
So Tyler Tech stuff comes out here too, right?
Correct. A hundred and... Hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents in renewals every year for all the, uh, Justice products that we have, which include Odyssey, Incode, and then the tax, Orion.
Some of the, I mean, some of these are period, it might, the bill might not hit now. It might be a quarter of the year.
They're quarterly. They're quarterly. They should hit quarterly, but we have had, as Megan can attest, we have had them as late as, um, February try to come back and say, "You owe us for December." Um, and so some of those, that's kind of why you probably see that we haven't, we have a large amount that's still set in there because again, that, it's all grand total of a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Um, and we also pay for the JP product, which is twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is the, uh, if you're looking at the, the first page, the projected costs, uh, that is on that one.
So all these different programs, Microsoft, uh, last has all these different programs, even with Tyler Tech and our other providers, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Is that the total?
Correct. Yes. If you add all of them.
And that's all coming out of computer service line item, right?
Correct. And I believe the Cisco, uh, the Cisco licensing that we have, uh, um, that's just for like the hardware, but that usually ends up going up because again, um, I expect it to be a lot larger than this number, uh, because Cisco's starting to get prouder and prouder of their product. Um, but the only thing is, uh, to do what we need to do in order to be compliant for the Sheriff's Office. Um, Cisco makes the best option for that product.
These, this other breakdown that you have, these are different projects that are planned?
Yes.
And or just like the switches, that's something that needs to be upgraded from time to time.
And I should have actually, um, uh, the DR services, um, that actually should have gotten moved up to the three hundred and seventy-six. Actually, I did not put that up.
But that's new. That's something the court just did in the past year.
Correct. Um, now switches, uh, I know that sounds like a lot of money for switches, but that's about half of what the switches that we have in the entire county. I'm in the middle of replacing out all, uh, I believe we have a grand total of, uh, twenty-four total switches in the county, and I'm in the middle of replacing all those out, uh, starting over at the Sheriff's Office and moving, uh, towards the courthouse and then over at the annex.
So all your projects are three hundred and one thousand?
Correct.
Exit rounded up, three hundred, two thousand, and then your renewals and things that are...
But you said that DR services really ought to be into the renewals.
Yeah, they should actually, uh, the, the, um, eighty-five thousand, that should actually be up in the renewal.
So that new disaster recovery system that we put, that would be ongoing.
That'd be four fifty.
Grand, grand total, yes. Now, I did have one other project that's in here that, um, that's gotten a lot of heat lately. Um, it's the email encryption, uh, the nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Um, that's gotten a lot of heat lately because again, some of the things that we should be encrypting, we're not encrypting when we send it even internally between the Sheriff's Office and DA's office. Um, we just found some of that out, um, and we should have been doing this this whole time in the last two years, and we haven't been doing it. So, and that would encrypt totally the actual email and make it to where without the decryption key, that, that data would be totally useless.
We had some employees that were testing or they've been going through a process of letting certain people test that encryption on emails and everything else.
Correct.
And that's been successful.
Yes. But really honestly, we should have been doing it for the entire dispatch office, um, and, um,
Tax office.
And, and the, uh, uh, this, not, the nineteen thousand would actually make it for the whole county instead of just for those test groups that we got.
That's to protect special personal information and things like that.
Correct. That would make sure that no, no, um, uh, identifiers or anything on inmates or, uh, suspected people, uh, that would get out if, if they were to put a email interceptor in between our stuff in order to get hold of those emails.
We had some of that at the IR to state it was very well enforced. Don't send personal information in emails. So that was, you do that, you get a referendum, and you do it more than that, you don't have problems.
Yeah. Um, um, let me see. Um, and also, uh, I'm expecting VMware, I've got eighteen thousand set aside, uh, in VMware that's actually, uh, VMware license, the sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. I'm expecting that to go up double next year, um, even though the, it's right now sitting at sixteen thousand. Uh, they were just bought out by a company and they do not look kindly on low, uh, they only bought the company out for the top ten percent, and they're kind of price gouging everybody for it. Um, I, but that's why I kind of got it. Usually that number for sixteen thousand is like a quarter of that. But because, um, I'm expecting them to price gouge for just one of the licenses that I had to get renewed, they, they kind of, I can see the writing on the wall. That's why I set it at sixteen thousand. Oh, you might not have gotten that one on the Vonage, which I think Vonage is not part and parcel of in my budget, right? The, that's, I believe, somewhere outside, but it was on a back sheet. It's fifty-five thousand, but that's not anywhere, I don't think I have that.
That's my phone system.
No, I think that comes out of each one of these.
Yeah, and I don't have it on my, I don't have it on my breakdown.
I have some of those. So that's essentially six hundred and eighty thousand dollars on that front page, and we got budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand.
Now, did we set the, was the, was the, and I, I only asked for in the conference and supplies for two thousand and, uh, around five thousand, five hundred. Was that set higher?
At first supplies?
First.
You're talking about conference?
Conference, yes. Did, was that set higher in the budget?
The court was, the court was asking that, to make sure y'all were doing continuing education, so that was just...
It went to twenty thousand, he put in it.
Oh, okay.
But that was for, y'all did that last year.
Yeah, did it last year. Y'all used seventy-eight hundred.
It just left the signs what it was.
Oh, okay. Cause the only thing I asked for was...
So how much you need for conference?
For conference, I, I was for two, I only asked for two thousand per employee, so, uh, six thousand.
Six thousand. But you're at seventy-eight right now, so you might need a little more than, told me eight?
But yeah, if we could do eight, that would be fine. Yes.
You said eighty-five hundred.
Instead of the two, two, no, the, uh, twenty, twenty thousand that we've got, if we could, we could set that at eight, that would be fine.
Eight? Like I said, uh?
Eight, yes, yes.
So if your concierge feeder services was cut by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that'd have an impact on some of these projects you wouldn't be able to do, correct?
It would definitely, um, it, it would cut into the switches and the hardware. Um, we have a five-year plan on the, uh, desktops and the laptops. Um, so I would have to actually cut into repli, then instead of going through and replacing the other half of the switches, I would have to wait until the year after, uh, in order to do something about that if we were to try to pull that much.
But that's not all of them, that's just part of them.
That, yes, I would just, uh, that.
In other words, what I'm saying, what you got budgeted is not all that the county has, it's only part of.
Well, what I budgeted for the switches was only half, yes.
That's what I mean.
Yes. And then the, uh, uh, what I have budgeted for the hardware refresh was desktop laptops. I just got a request the other day on laptops and, uh, desktops, the DA, um, since we are providing for the departments, um, they were asking for some, uh, more la, some newer laptops because some of the stuff they're looking at requires a higher processor. Each one of those laptops was three grand each. Um...
And I can tell you without talking about it, that needs to happen.
Yes, and...
Because it's a security issue for the DA's office. I'm not gonna mention it any further than that.
Now, I do have a preliminary idea to get them over the hump, um, to actually get them a desktop and a laptop in the interim. Uh, but I, I, I did put that, some of that money into that hardware refresh. So again, we would definitely have to cut into the refreshing the desktops. We, we've gone through, Edson has replaced a grand total of, I want to say, eight or nine, uh, uh, desktops just this month. Uh, last month, we kind of were a little bit on the lacking side. Uh, we only ended up getting four, but that was because of all the other projects that were going on.
Yeah, but you had GTS and those things, y'all had some cybersecurity things that you've had to work on.
Correct.
And I'll just say that they, they shut it down, so.
We've actually, uh, um, we've actually, uh, had, uh, more incidents, uh, amongst the state as a whole on cyber attacks, um, than any other state. We are the ones that get hit the hardest for cybersecurity. So, it's kind of why I think the, which, um, I'm really happy that we're at the point we are with the cybersecurity training. We only got three people left, and we're at a point, we've got until the end of the month to get that done.
And we got no choice. If they don't get it done by the end of the month, they're shut down because we lose grants if we're not a hundred percent. We have to report that to the state, and that's the deadline, correct?
Correct. We have till the thirty-first to file that.
Right.
State.
So what you got in there basically is gonna be kind of meet the demand of what you think you've got, what you anticipate.
Correct, yes.
So we've got twenty-three thousand cupped in the budget, and the only other option we got is to take it from county clerk, district clerk, constables, uh, your JPs, I mean, there is nowhere else. There's nowhere to make any adjustments. So I appreciate this. I mean, this presentation, it brings some things to light for me that I don't know exactly, you know, what your plans are. So that's why I took this approach to ask these questions. And, uh, the only other choice I see is if the court's pleasure to take the last hundred and seven thousand dollars that we need out of general fund. You said you've replaced eight or nine last month. How many do you, do you have in the county, an estimate of laptops and desktops?
A grand total of a hundred and seventy-eight desktops and roughly around forty, I believe, laptops. I'm not too sure on that number, but I do know the desktop number, um, because...
I was thinking it was around two twenty was kind of one we were looking at.
That right there is a hundred and eight teens, I mean, two eighteen, so.
Yeah, I believe it.
There's a lot of computers. I've talked to other counties, and the staff that we got is taking care of a lot of stuff that they couldn't... When, when we talked to the COGS, they couldn't believe that they were taking care of that many computers.
Yeah, they, um, we have kind of grown and ingested a lot of, uh, laptops and desktops over the years that, um, especially with the court's needs with Zoom stuff, we've, uh, we've had to add a whole bunch more than what I really would like.
And you took on some this morning too.
Yeah.
Okay, I knew it was a lot. I didn't realize what it would be, but... Appreciate it, Mike, I do.
Was there any other specifics I can try and jiddle into a little?
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you.
I know, I know you had it in the last report that they gave the court too, they're working on a bench book for the district judges. And, but, and that's ready to go, but they've got to do some tests, so they're just waiting. My understanding is they just got to have the judges decide to test it, correct?
And I incur, I, I'm probably going to have to gain a couple, uh, probably about six more desktops on that is what we're looking at, um, for, for this whole judge's bench project. Uh, judge's bench will allow them to go and have all their papers, so they, and a touchscreen in their courtroom, so that way they can look at the court papers without actually having to have a physical paper copy of it.
And just in visiting with the district judges, I'll just tell you, some of them want to do it, some of them don't want to do it. So it's gonna be one of those test things, and maybe somebody says, "Well, I kind of like that after looking at it," so. But we've got a couple of, of judges that may test it out and see how it works.
I'm hoping that with the, uh, initial tester, which I haven't gotten word on which that one's gonna be, but I have an idea. Um, so I'm hoping that he'll like it and kind of present it to the rest of them.
True. Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate it. I got a quick question also. For, on our quarter point attorney, I know it's crazy, I know it's costing us a bunch of money, but it's all been broke down in different, you know, now, you know, there's ninety-five here, a hundred here, that's never been there before. Where did we pay for it before?
Out of those lines. Let me show you, hang on, I'll show you. They're... It's, they're called bookkeeping funds, so as long as the budget of the quarter point attorneys at the top doesn't go over, okay, so like on page thirty-six.
Letter, letter of claim.
Yeah, thirty-six.
Give us the page, um.
Thirty-six.
Page thirty-six. As long as the quarter point attorney's total that are in the different kinds of pages, adult misdemeanor, non-cap felony, capital murder, felony appeals, non-cap felony, um, investigation. As long as those total do not go over ninety-five thousand dollars in the quarter point attorney line, then we're good. Because I have to have it split, split out because of our TIDC, we have to, we have a grant, um, in indigent defense.
So is that where it's being paid out? Like you go back to twenty-one to there, it's just zero, zero all the way through?
Yes, this is what we've done for years.
And it comes out of another?
No, it, it goes...
This number is just what it can exceed.
It's budgeted there at ninety-five, but then it's, it's charged to each individual line.
Okay.
Because it's easier to budget there instead of, well, how many misdemeanors are we gonna have next year? How many felonies are we gonna have?
So like here, this was spent sixty-three and twenty-five hundred. It's been forty-nine and four thousand, so it's still under the hundred.
Let, let me kind of get, while we're on this, uh...
Overall, it does not go over the amount that's budgeted in quarter point attorneys in that line on that department.
That's the only other where I didn't know, I didn't think we'd, I kept taking nothing from it, but that was...
This was done way before me.
There's, there's policies that the courts have put in place on how the indigent defense is paid, correct me?
I think so, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Because just like if they've got, if, if they've charged with a felony and they're charged with two misdemeanors, okay? And they plead on the felony and they take the two misdemeanors into consideration. So you've got an attorney that's representing them on all three cases, then there's a certain amount that they're gonna get paid for the felony, okay? I'm thinking i- it's by probably the class felony. The felonies I'm not as familiar with, there's like, let's say seven hundred and fifty. That quarter point attorney's gonna get paid seven fifty for the felony, because he was appointed on the two others that are dismissed. He's gonna get five hundred for the first mis- misdemeanor and a hundred for the other. So seven fifty plus another six hundred for the misdemeanors that were dismissed. Y'all understand what I'm saying?
But the state does set that rate as to what they get for the, no, they don't.
The di, the district judges.
Yes, the district judges don't have.
The judges together set a policy, and that makes it fixed for when we're approving the bills and also for, uh, the, the defense attorneys know what they're gonna get paid based on, you know, that, that policy.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how that worked.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a standard set for different class offenses and how many cases they hit.
Okay.
Okay.
But the way this is set up, way before me. I think, I think Stan did it actually the first time he was here.
So it can be brokered down at the end of the year, like you have it in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, then it's in the different line items?
Yes, that's how we charge it.
Within themselves.
By, by what kind of case it is.
Yes. But the revenues is the ninety-five.
No, the total.
Essentially, it's what's budgeted overall.
Yeah, within themselves.
Okay. So we're gonna take the balance, have a fun balancing, correct?
That's what I'd like to do. That'd be leave a hundred and seven thousand dollars, I think is what it is. If the court's pleasure, I'd like to make the motion.
What is it?
Well, I mean, if you want to...
Exactly.
A hundred and seven thousand.
Uh, but you're increasing road bridge three and one by a hundred, by seventy thousand?
Seven DPs, yeah. And we got, you know, eleven from one and twelve from another, so I mean, it, that helps that some.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Chapin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon. I'm a favor, say aye.
Aye.
In all abstaining, no. Okay. I'm not over rolling bridge. Okay. What else?
Adjourn.
Sure.
Uh, do you want me to say what we've, y'all have changed this court?
Wasn't too many changes, really.
Um, the contingency, we moved two hundred thousand out of contingency to transfer other funds for the Ag Extension Life Project, one million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine to the Expo Center, and then we left, we're leaving a total of five hundred in contingency. And then, um, reducing Sheriff's Office gas by eighty-four thousand plus benefits, and that is going to transfer to other funds, which will be transferred to Fund Two Fifty-Five Security Service position to add to that salary. And then a dollar to hot funds for a salary other and health insurance, a dollar to TC DRS payment, um, moving a thousand from the elections other to Sheriff's Office cell phone to pay for their cell phone. And then reducing emergency management overtime to twenty-five hundred, reducing IT conference to eight thousand, and then increasing road and bridge one and three's construction materials by seventy thousand each. Does that sound good?
Thank you.
Plus visits? Eighty-four hundred, did I say eight-four thousand? I'm, I'm looking at millions of debt we're never bringing in. I mean, eighty-four hundred.
All right, you're gonna, you're gonna make those changes?
Yeah, he set up real quick, I like.
So you'll make all those changes in?
Yes.
Okay, could she put all this in so we can do a run and have it printed out?
Well, I have to do it anyways for Monday, for next Monday. I'll have to put all of it in anyways if we plan on adopting Monday.
Right, okay.
Unless there's any more changes.
Y'all might have fifteen more. Fifteen more changes? Is that all?
Are we good?
I think so.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mams. I'm a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned.